County where the legislative require every sentence. Last one, you're nineteen eighty-four, which has been entitled, Danny D. for Republicans and having section four, the probability, he classed as a paragraph of division. Person. The objective. Or that further. Shall be.
There you go. Now, I will call the panel. Any citizen wanting to address the board, ask to stand at microphone during the time and the address of the board. The address will be limited to a time of five minutes. We say name before we begin the test. Anyone that wants to. Seeing no comment, I will close this hearing.
You have this sheet right here.
Those questions.
Have the sirens and lights and all that added because it's just a tour book.
So, yes, some people seem to know what information like about how much training was.
Here. 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 Okay. Here.
Your heavenly Father and Architect of the Universe, we give thanks to you for allowing us to assemble in your sight. Father, we pray for those oppressed and ask for their protection, that there would be peace. Father, we pray for restoration and renewed hope. Look to the heavens for peace and protection during this time of violence and oppression. Father, we pray for the entire world community, including the leaders of our own country. We ask that you give them the wisdom and ingenuity to respond in ways that end war and strike and move us all to the world for peace and bias. And we ask for your mercy, that it might change the hearts and minds of those who have chosen the path of destruction and oppression. Father, we also pray for brave men and women in uniform, at home and far away, who have chosen to protect us in our way of life, no matter the personal cost. Father, we ask that you give us strength when we are weak, courage when we are afraid, comfort when we feel alone, hope when we feel dejected, and peace when we are in turmoil. Father, we also ask that you walk closely beside us. And may we remember the words in the book of John, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-seven. Peace I leave with you, my peace I give to you. All these things, we ask your blessing through your son, Jesus Christ, whose name all things are possible. Amen.
Amen. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of what stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
For the special on favor. Do you want to vote? Motion carried. Need a motion for the two of the minutes of February fifth. A discussion. No discussion on favor.
Aye.
They want to call us. Motion carried. You want to communicate with us.
Two resolutions were received from Essex County. On a resolution urging the county governor Kathy Moore-Bolt and New York State Legislature, legislature to support the Empire State Unity College, or force development, so we're actually guaranteed.
Keep going. Move on to citizen participation. Any citizen wanting to address the board is asked to stand at microphone, state their name before the beginning of their talk. The citizen participation will be in the form of an oral address directed to members of this board. Although legislators or staff will not have the opportunity to answer questions or respond to the talk at this time. This part of the agenda is not a time for audio, visual, PowerPoint presentations, or performances, and the address will be limited to five minutes. Robert Carroll, if you want to address the board.
My home is in.
At this moment.
Really?
Yeah. Any.
So. What are you?
Robert Carroll. Like long since in nineteen seventy-one.
Right. What is this? So my name is Robert Carroll. I have fresh reasons. I'm from Pittsburgh, Pat sales. And one of those has most of. They're long. And one of the things that I've known is driving all around. Justice. Three times. Is discrepancy of the fuel prices. And I don't think it's just gas. For your auto fuel. But the gas, you know, this is something that's been going on for. For a very long time. I think that a lot of the people I'm speaking for with like an address, with an explanation that makes sense. Another concern that I've had with. Not. The transfer of. I've had bad experiences. I think something to be serious. The platform you stand on suffering of hydraulic leaks and other garbage juice curvils. And but the biggest concern is I think people are already falling down into a trailer. And there's gates put there, and these gates get opened up, and somebody could do the same thing. There's a large machine. Maybe a lot of you have seen it in action. It has no mercy on vehicles, people. And when the boom swings, it comes into this area that's very slippery. And it struck my trailer. And it jolted my truck. Fortunately, I wasn't standing beside the trailer. It would just have somebody in half. I was making my way back up to the truck. I know there's been some changes made there, but no changes I've ever seen were meaningful, where you actually disclose your, most of your trash. I think that's something that really needs to be put up on the top of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Your name? Any other? Sure. One shot deal. All right. Moving on. Presentation resolutions. Ms. Curran.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move this resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract extension with the fiscal year twenty statewide interoperable indication grant with New York State Homeland Security.
Second by Mr. Smith, Mr. Paul, and that may discussion of the resolution. No discussion on favor of the resolution.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
Thank you. I move this resolution authorizing the chair to sign a revised contract with the Volunteer Transportation Center, Inc. to provide a call center for the first mile, last mile services.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Doonak. Any discussion of the resolution? White.
If anybody knows, what, what are the costs of this call center? And how would it be staffed? Because I don't believe that came out during the committee meeting.
Jason. From Jason.
Thank you. Yes, the call center would be staffed. Representing those from the Volunteer Transportation Center. They, I have that. With the transits. And the cost, I don't call right off the top of my head. Because the costs all are around.
Fifty thousand? Is that a yearly cost? And what does that cover?
That covers the expense associated with the staffing, with the, for the call center.
Is that staff, if I may?
Yeah.
Is that staff that's already on board or staff that would need to be hired?
Sedition of time associated with the staff and then to their.
And during the normal course of business, is that when it will be staffed? Or?
Yeah. Yes.
In other words, an eight-hour day or a nine-hour day? Okay. And where will, where will it be? Where would be located?
Volunteer. The mission center has. A presence in St. Lawrence County and also. Jefferson County, but the staffing will be in St.
All right. Will, will the staffing be solely for St. Lawrence County or will it also serve Jefferson Kelly?
Solely for St.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Smith.
This is the program that we've had.
This is a program that we've had for.
Anyone else? No further discussion on favor of the resolution.
Aye.
Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
I move a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a summary agreement with the Developmental Authority of the North Country for the delivery of the county-wide housing rehabilitation program round number five.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Doonak, Mr. Fay. Any discussion on this resolution? No discussion on favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
I offer this resolution authorizing the chair to sign a federal equitable sharing program with the annual certification report. Oh, sorry, and the. Sheriff's Office.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith and Ms. Doonak. Any discussion? No discussion on favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
I offer this resolution modifying the twenty twenty-four budget in the sheriff's office regarding to interest earned on the Howard G. Buffett Foundation.
And is there a second? I think by Mr. Doonak and Mr. Webster. Any discussion? No discussion, this is a roll call. Yes.
Yeah.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Nethers.
Yes.
Denisha.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Paul.
Aye.
Hey.
Yeah.
Agger. Yes. Webster.
Yes.
Perk.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Aye.
Yeah. Karen. I. Reagan.
Aye.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
I offer this resolution modifying the twenty twenty-four budget for the sheriff's office for the fiscal year twenty-two Operation Stone Garden Program Grant from the New York State Division of Homeland Security.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Denisha and Mr. Lightfoot. And Mr. Webster, Mr. Perk. Any discussion on the resolution? No discussion, this is a roll call vote as well.
Yes.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Smithers.
Yes.
Denisha.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Paul.
Aye.
Hey.
Yes.
Tucker. Yes. Webster.
Yes.
Perk.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Aye.
From Millie. Yeah. Karen. I. Reagan.
Aye.
Forsythe.
Yeah.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. And Ms. Curran.
After this resolution modifying the twenty twenty-four budget with the sheriff's office to accept the fiscal year twenty-four police traffic services grant from the state and New York Governor Traffic, Traffic Safety Committee.
And do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lightfoot, Mr. Doonak, and Mr. Webster. Any discussion on the resolution? No discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Sheridan.
Yes.
Smithers.
Yes.
Denisha.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Paul.
Aye.
Hey.
Yes.
Tucker. Yes. Webster.
Yes.
Perk.
Yes.
Jeanette.
Aye.
From Millie. Yes. Karen. I. Reagan.
Aye.
Forsythe.
Yeah.
Lepa.
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Thank you. Just a point of information for you. You know why we do roll call? Now, you see, patients would change the project. For the part of the roll call, each member to vote. Whenever we change, it's just clear about this. And. We don't. Mm-hmm. There you go. Next question, Ms. Curran.
I move this resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract with the New York State Department of Corrections and Community Supervision Office of Nutritional Services to provide food products to the St. Lawrence County Correctional Facility.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Burke, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Doonak. Any discussion? No discussion on favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
You want to pose? Motion carried. Ms. Curran.
I move this resolution modifying the twenty twenty-four budget for the sheriff's office for patrol vehicle for the criminal division.
And do I have a second? Second by Mr. Doonak, Mr. Burke. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this is a roll call.
Nethers.
Yes.
Denisha.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Paul.
Aye.
Hey.
Yes.
Agger. Yes. Webster.
Yes. Aye.
Millie. Yeah. Hi.
Yes.
Lightfoot.
Yes.
Sharon.
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I offer a resolution for planning March first, two thousand and four, as both five-hour free from social media Friday in St. Lawrence County.
Second by Mr. Fay, Mr. Manelli, Mr. Second by everybody. Uh, it's gone by. I hope, is there any discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Smith, first, and Mr. Chair.
For the benefit of those that weren't here, this idea was presented to us by a group of students that came from few schools back a few weeks ago, and we all were pretty unanimous and congratulated them on their idea, as this tends to be a problem of spending a lot of time on social media, uh, not just with young people, because there's some older folks that like to use their social media too, but sounded like a good idea.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Doonak?
I've just seen it, got any data back like how it's successful or not. I put my signs out there, so.
We have. You know, finally, my.
Second after the.
Yeah. So, once we have the damage, we.
I was just going to thank people for participating and then also just to remind them that the survey had been sent to the email that they registered with to go back in and just do those follow-up questions. We hope to make this an annual event, so thank you all for supporting it.
Very good. And that was a great idea. What's your average number hours per day? Mike. Eighteen, six. Eight? Eight? Eighteen, eight, two. On favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone?
Aye.
Motion, yes. Mr. Hall.
I mean, the chair. I offer a resolution accepting performance incentive achievement award funds and modifying the twenty twenty-four budget.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Doonak, Ms. Curran. Any discussion on this resolution? No discussion, this is a roll call vote. No discussion, this is a roll call vote.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Kay?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Western?
Yes.
Burke? Jeanette?
Aye.
Terminally?
Yeah.
Karen?
Aye.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I offer a resolution reappointing the medical consultant and nurse practitioner for the public health department.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Fay, Mr. Smithers, Mr. Lightfoot, Mr. and Ms. Curran. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Hall?
Chair, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign a contract to see way value eventually canceled. The comprehensive opioid stimulant substance use program COP two funds or program fund for community services.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Reagan, Mr. Fay, Mr. Burke, Mr. Janett, Mr. Burke. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Chair. Lastly, I offer a resolution authorizing the chair to sign an agreement between the Department of Social Services and adoption star.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Lightfoot, Mr. Smithers, Mr. Janett, Mr. Denisha and Ms. Curran. Any discussion? Burke?
I'm wondering how long does this slide extend for this? Um. One year. The, if it doesn't go well, it's a little bit of a toll on our part. If it, so if it doesn't go well, we're not. Man? Sorry. The way the, the game goes, it would be by youth. It's not a set payment for the year, so if it doesn't go well, we can just stop using them and we're not locked into anything from their court, their court.
Right.
And how, how will you evaluate your difficulties? Well, we'll be having our caseworkers will be working in concert with the uh, the LCSW's that are meeting with the youth and with the other uh, individuals, uh, and you know, and uh, trying to get the right word here, the permanency, you know, if, if it works out and they're not leaving and they're not signing themselves up to come back to, to us or any of them at home, that's to be a success as well. I would find this formulation.
Yes, that's right. Yes. Yes, okay. Uh, Mr. Denisha Max, then Ms. Curran.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Chair, I would just like to uh, say thank you for bringing this forward. It's like an innovative approach. Uh, yeah. Hope it has, uh, over.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Curran?
So, I know that we are extraordinarily limited um, by statute and what we can ask about certain things that go on with possible. But it's, it's a group of people that would ever come, send representatives so that we could meet them because some of us have always concerned about you know, the people involved in this and what have they done before and who else do they work with or some extra information, I mean, handing them children, right? And it would be really nice because once the children are someplace trying to get information out of them, like trying to get important maps. Would be nice before children went someplace to get the necessary information.
I could ask to have uh, somebody come, I'm not sure. If they're headquarters, it's not a big deal, or maybe you are, or. A friend said something.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Uh, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Mr. Chair. Resolutions for authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Department of Lodges, DPC for engineering services to replace town mine road bridge over Litton Creek, P I N three three six 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 seven zero.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Burke, Mr. Smithers, Ms. Curran. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for authorizing the chair to sign a roadside.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran. Any discussion? Hard to imagine roadside. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for authorizing the highway department to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Franklin County Highway Department for Road Solutions.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Smithers, Mr. Lightfoot, Ms. Curran. Any discussion on this? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Motion carried, Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for modifying the fiscal year, sorry, fiscal year twenty-three WIOA budget for transfer of four million funds from dislocated worker and administration accounts to adult accounts.
And is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran, Mr. Perkins? Any discussion? No discussion, this is a roll call, vote.
Perkins?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Kay?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Terminally?
Yeah.
Karen?
Aye.
Reagan?
Aye.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Nethers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for authorizing the chair to sign a contract with Atlantic Testing Laboratories to keep environmental investigation tanks from renewable property owned by the Red Voluble Trust.
And is there a second? By Ms. Curran. And Mr. Smith. Where is that question?
That question?
Oh, Mr. Smith, correct.
Um, is this the second phase of this, uh, do you know, Steve, uh, is this phase one or phase two and do we have any idea on what the time expectation is for this search?
Thanks. Um, I didn't want to respond into it, but I recognize, but um, let me give you just a quick fifteen seconds, I promise. We have done the phase one already. We have done the phase two already. Phase two came back identifying various drums and well, as things that need to have materials included tested. This authorization is part of the phase two component, but we essentially know what is at the front. Um, the only thing we don't know is what's in those tanks and brooks. The initial testing. Yeah.
And. And uh, do we have any idea on how long this is going to take? Is this going to extend beyond when, say, if it's going to take a year, so it'd be beyond when it would be put up for a public auction or is it just a short period of time, it would be done well before that? Just trying to, so I can report back to the uh, agencies a little more.
Thank you. Um, there's really two potential outcomes that could occur. One, uh, the testing that comes back could say that material included in the tanks and drums, it's not posing the environment. Patient or the breath environment. In which case we can move forward almost immediately, closure action, to either send it to public auction or potentially discuss with the board, which I'm going to raise, it may direct sale. The second option is that it could come back, that they are, are actually in, are public based evidence. I'd like to be back to talking about additional money necessary to dispose of that.
Any other questions? No other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for setting a date for public hearing for proposed local laws for year twenty-four, rescinding all previous ethical laws and amendments for adopting St. Lawrence County.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Lightfoot, Mr. Smithers, Ms. Curran? You know, you have your. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for urging Governor Hopple to double the amount of funding for the critically needed aging services for the twenty-four, twenty-five New York State budget to order adults and age safely in.
Seconded by Mr. Denisha, Mr. Perkins, Ms. Curran. Mr. Reagan. Any discussion on the resolution, Ms. Curran?
First, I would um, ask if I could be added as a co-sponsor to this. And then, secondly, in the most recent announcement where Maple Downs is going to close down the quarter of the building housing, think that we really need to think about how we are going to secure our public and make sure that. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Smith?
Uh, I think this is an important resolution for us to consider. We have quite a, more people all the time uh, in the older age bracket, uh, perhaps even myself. Um, and so, there is definitely, here we hear about these uh, facilities that do care for older adults being closed down because they have a hard time, hard time surviving financially. Um, part of the problem certainly needs to be revising reimbursement rates. Data's federal, so it's something we can uh, issue them about. But uh, I certainly think that this is a resolution that we can all support because of the definite need for this service.
Thank you, Mr. Smithers. Anyone else? Anything else? You gotta take care of, best person for our most. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for adopting local law uh, for the year twenty-two, sending local law number seven for year nineteen ninety-four banning dangerous weapons and county-owned buildings and vehicles.
Is there a second? Mr. Perkins, Ms. Curran, Mr. Webster, Fay. Any discussion? Ms. Curran?
Sorry. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor to this, if it would be a thing.
Anyone else? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Motion carried. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for calling on the United States Congress to pass the Affordable Connectivity Program Extension Act, H R six nine two nine S three five.
And is there a second? By Ms. Terminally and Ms. Curran? Any discussion on the resolution? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for authorizing the chair to sign a contract with the New York State Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services for the generator project and modifying the 2024 budget for the county administrative.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran? Any discussion on this resolution? This is a roll call vote.
Paul?
Aye.
Kay?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Terminally?
Yes.
Karen?
Aye. Reagan?
Aye.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes. Yes.
Nethers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
I think?
Yes.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolutions for retiring health insurance coverage for employees un-reverented.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran, Mr. Perkins? Any discussion on the resolution? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone else? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolution is for establishing a health insurance premium payment policy for St. Lawrence County retirees and eligible employees.
And is there a second? And Mr. Perkins and Ms. Curran? Any discussion on this resolution? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. Resolution is for authorizing the chair to sign a renewal agreement with uh, security services for the Division of Security Services of the Harold B. Smith Building.
And is there a second? Second by Mr. Burke and Mr. Perkins? Any discussions? All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Perkins?
Name is Chairman.
Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Denisha, Ms. Manett, and Mr. Any discussion on the resolution? Mr. Smith?
Could you tell us again, uh, we get money, part of this money back from federal or state, or is this funded entirely by the county?
The preschool in New York State at fifty-nine and a half percent.
Thank you.
Any other question? Mr. Corrigan's roll call.
Kay?
Yes.
Taggart?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Burke?
Yes.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Terminally?
Yes.
Karen?
Aye. Reagan?
Aye.
Forsythe?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Nethers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Paul?
Aye.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for modifying the 2023 budget for the public health department due to an increase in expenses in preventative services programs.
And is there a second? Second by Ms. Curran? What is that? No discussion, this is a roll call.
Taggart?
Yes.
Here.
Burke?
Yes.
Jeanette?
Aye.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure.
Said, yes.
Yes.
Nethers?
Yes.
Denisha?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Paul?
Kay?
Yeah.
Fifteen, yes.
Motion carried. Mr. Janett?
Name is Chair. This resolution is for authorizing pay adjustments for the medical director for the medication assisted treatment commission for the St. Lawrence County Correctional Facility.
Is there a second? By Mr. Burke and Ms. Curran? Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone? Motion carried. Mr. Janett? Name is Chair. Or, or wait, hold on. Pass this over to Mr. Rick.
You got it. Mr. Reagan's user.
Exactly, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Janett. I'd like to introduce this resolution, this proclamation recognizing the hundredth birthday of Mrs. Eleanor Randall.
And is there a second? By Mr. Burke, Mr. Janett, Mr. Fay, Ms. Curran? Mrs. Taggart? Mr. Rick? Name is Chair. This is a resolution recognizing a lady in my district who's going to be celebrating her hundredth birthday and who is at St. Joseph's Nursing Home. And she is a wonderful lady whose life goes back to twenty ways back in the Augsburg community and we are just celebrating this important milestone in her life, so thank you. Anyone else? Congratulations, I am. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Denision? Mr. Care?
Mr. Care, offer a resolution. Authorizing the kind of vacancies and movements adoption.
And is there a second? By Mr. Junat, Ms. Curran, Mr. Burke, any discussion? Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
One vote. Motion carried. Mr. Denision?
Goodness, Chairman. I offer a resolution urging Governor Hopeful and New York State Legislature to restore and increase Chip's Highway funding.
And is there a second by Mr. Smith, Mr. White, Mr. Ray, and Mr. Webb and Ms. Curran? Any discussion? Mr. Smith?
Yes, looking at the proposed budget that our governor was put forth and some of the things that state spends money on, I think to decrease the amount of money that they spend on our highways is a wrong thing to do. So I'll definitely be supporting this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I used to work for the state legislature and I find this particularly concerning. One of the most important things that our constituents owe to us do is provide them with a safe way to get from where they are to where they need to be and I just find it very sad and very shocking that the governor and those who advise her find the first place worthy of cuts is one of the most important areas of services provided by rural counties, towns, villages, communities. I really appreciate Mr. Denision bringing this forward and this board's standing up and our state legislators bringing this to the public's attention because people in New York City have never seen a cut in upstate New York that they can't support. But God forbid, the Metropolitan Transit Authority, the subway system takes a cut, oh, it's the end of the world, so. Thank you, everyone, for supporting this and shame on those downstate who think that lives and safety of residents of upstate New York are on purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Mr. Denision, I apologize. I should have called him before, so.
Appreciate the support. You know, I think the thing that I find ironic is that a hundred million dollar cut to CHIPS, which represents five hundred thousand dollars, St. Lawrence County all the towns. Facilities. We talked not long ago about the state intercepting F M A P funds. The money that we get from the federal government to the state, from the state to the counties to assist with Medicaid. We saw in this year's proposed budget the one cut schooling. In one of the school schools in my district, twenty five percent of the schooling. We're spending millions of dollars in swimming pools in New York City. We're spending millions of dollars to renovate a bathhouse in Jones Beach. It was somewhere that they were two and a half billion for illegals in cities. And anyone to take a hundred thousand or a hundred million dollars away from our district?
What's that? Ms. Curran?
So the governor has a commission on traffic safety. I kind of reminded them of that last year when I had to go on Route thirty seven in Wattington and stand with my feet hot hole. It was so big that resident had called me because it kicked them out of the lane and had there been oncoming traffic. Terrible accident. Think if we're gonna have a traffic safety war, part of what we need to have is a working understanding about traffic safety is that it really starts with the condition of your roads. If you have potholes, if the roads are unsafe because they're not finished correctly, if there's big problems and people being able to stay in their lane. I believe that the number one cause of traffic accidents, and the sheriff is here to make and give you the nod here, is poor lane discipline. And that starts with potholes and other things. So if we're not gonna repair the lanes, we're not taking care of our citizens. And we should be taking care of our citizens' safety.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. Mr. Junat?
And we should fix whatever nightmare in front of Clarkson in that intersection. That's, what the hell is that? I don't, I don't understand. I mean, it says use both lanes, but it says go, go to the left, what, what, what is that?
Yes, when we send this to the governor and the reps, send a copy of our resolution where we agreed to pay an additional forty four mile in St. Lawrence County because we realize the importance of our roads. I think that would be a good, our dad. All in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Junat? Oh, we're gonna, we're gonna. Wait, motion to bring this resolution up. Ms. Curran? Seconded by Mr. Paul. Motion for the airboat now up. Mr. Junat? I'm sorry. Need to pull in the motion business off. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, let's look. Put your hands up, Mr.
What do we count? About share?
Anti or for?
For. For or against?
Roll call. I want my roll call. Do that roll. Now I got six hands.
What share?
Let's see a hand.
We have a roll call?
You'd like a roll call?
It'd be nice, yeah. Let's do that, please, Mr. Chairman.
Webster?
Let's have a vote and bring it off.
Yes.
Burr?
Yes.
Jeanette?
No.
Carmel?
Yes.
Curran?
Yeah.
Reagan?
Yes.
Forsyth?
Yes.
Lightfoot?
No.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Muthers?
Yes.
Deja?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Paul?
Aye.
A.
Yes.
Haggard?
No.
And he has five now.
Okay, so the motion is off the table. Let's combine the discussion. Do we have any discussion? First hand? January first, Ms. Burke, this is who I want to speak for.
So on your desk this evening are the specifications associated with upgrades necessary for the new airboat that is in question this evening to be fitted or used as a rescue vehicle. The amount, the purchase is a hundred and fifty five thousand. The balance is what we see before you. The difference in the miscellaneous, I call your attention to the bottom, will be itemized for us in that five thousand when we let them know that was gonna be ceded. I did have some questions about where the boat was made. I've gotten that answer that it's Wisconsin. And the other question was annual maintenance. We have spoken with the owner currently in possession of this vehicle, of this boat, and it is a regular engine, Chevy engine, so it's subject to oil changes like a vehicle would be. It's not jet engine, for those who may have been concerned about that. Annual maintenance very similar to a vehicle.
Okay, Ms. Burke first.
Actually, I have a question for Ruth, if I could.
Certainly.
I believe, Ruth, in talking about the airboat, you had resolved the issue of the radio. That you would put more money into the purchase of emergency radios? Or am I mistaken?
I can, I can provide clarification. So also Director Danner is on with us as well if there's specific questions to. With regards to some of the feedback we received surrounding the four scenario, which I think was part of the dialogue for departments to consider and to provide some feedback. And many of the feedback, Mr. Burke's point was, they wanted to see an increase associated with what's being provided over and above the five million dollars of the county, along with the amount of, I believe, six million dollars are being put into the radio system that's also going to provide each and every department, the county, with a number of radios driven by a formula. So the difference between what they're interested in having in the formula Jefferson County used successfully, there's a net difference. And so Director Danner has also been out, I think several of you have attended some follow-up sessions about those radios in the districts. And I think, at least as I observed, there was a key interest on the board to have local municipalities pay for, above and beyond what we were providing. But I did indicate that I would bring, look at the net difference, and I would bring that back to the board's consideration to go a bit farther than perhaps the formula did. All the way, I don't think that's appropriate, but I think there are a number of variables that we've become aware of that provide us with more information about the setup in the municipalities. Now, not every vehicle that they would like to use the radio. If they would like it to be that way, there are some they can make. So that was the discussion. Certainly, I can't speak for the board, but I would bring that back to consideration.
Right. And to emergency services? Matt is endorsing your airboat? Or we know?
He is with us. Matt, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Let's say Burke had a question.
I'm sorry, I couldn't really hear legislator Burke.
I'll relay it.
Yes, please.
She's questioning whether you're sold on the airboat? Are you requesting airboat or?
Matt, could you hear the chairman?
No, I could not.
So legislator Burke is asking for your input on the acquisition of the airboat. Are you supportive of it?
In the last, in the last thirty days, we've had two incidents where we could have had a call out for the airboat. With local residents that were out ice fishing and doing adventures on the ice, so it would come in handy. It is another tool in the toolbox for our first responders out there in the field. I hundred percent support the purchase of it. It would come in handy. And I do believe that at some point it would save a life. And I do believe there was a statement.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Curran, I'll have this next. I got Mr. Junat.
Thank you. Just a couple of logistical questions. So this is a pre-owned airboat that's one fifty five. What is the cost of a new one? The cost of a new one is two hundred and fifty two thousand. And how many hours does this three on one hour? Eleven. Does it come with warranties and is there any kind of a history of damage, wreckage, anything like that? Matt, can you speak to that?
It does come with the remainder of it, certain hours on the motor. But obviously, you know, I mean, we would, the company would have to put some kind of insurance on it, which we are self-insured, but.
Where will we house this? And where would it be located waiting to be called out? From a logistical standpoint, our initial thoughts were here again. Thank you.
What's that? Okay, Mr. Smith is next.
Okay, Quagmire can answer this. There's a question about the degree of difficulty in operation of this airboat, of the training that would be required. How many people would be trained to operate this and how much time would be involved in training these personnel to operate it?
Part of the agreement with the purchase was for them to, when they do delivery, is training on, on the vessel. It will be a train to trainer, so we will have some county staff, including some of the personnel from the sheriff's office in on the training, and then we could train people further from there.
Any other questions? Here you are, sir. Mr. Junat and Mr. Webster.
Can I ask a technical question about the engine on this? So I was looking, this is the G M L S X, and the X is really important. The Capo X is the variant of, of that engine, of a crate motor, right? So the L S X is the seven liter, four twenty seven, small block, though, you know, two thousand and six four vet. And now, that's the big X. So if there's an L S with a small X, then that's a whole different trade engine, right? So what the thing with that, that engine, it is a cast iron block, which is great for this thing, so that's why I was wondering. Because on here, the X is capitalized, right? So that's a huge difference in horsepower, your take your time and maintenance.
And I know that's outside my tech.
Sorry, yeah, that's why I think you. We'll try, we'll get with that.
The engine? Can you? Matt, can you hear me?
I can hear you now, yes, Mr. Chair.
Did you hear anything about the technological question by Mr. Junat on the engine?
I, I did hear, he was talking about the engines. When we were meeting with them and in the beginning, we, we put together a committee to search for what the best purchase would be for the county. And while we were doing that, the bigger engine, Serenac Lake Fire Department has one, and the problem they were seeing is that it overheats a lot. And even in the middle of operations, they had to shut it down in the middle of winter, let it cool down. This does not happen with the engine that's coming with this airboat.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Johnson, that?
A question. Both of all EMS getting radioed. I'm just curious, does that include local law enforcement and ambulance services too, or is that just a fire department?
It, it is, it would be every law enforcement agency, all our police departments, the sheriff's office, all our EMS, and all our fire departments.
Thank you.
Yep. And, and part of the R F P, before when we were putting the R F P together, we did a calculation, kind of an estimate, according to the formula based. And, and that's where we come up with these numbers. The same formula like Ruth talked about, Jefferson County, Anadaga, Oswego, Taiga, all those counties did the same formula base for those agencies when they did the same switch over.
Is that? Anyone else have their first question? Mr. Denision?
Okay.
Name is Chair. Got a question. I just wanted to say. Say. I do not, I do not think it's necessary for St. Lawrence County to own airboats. We have, we have access to three, three airboats, New York State Police, New York State D E C, and Aquos Sasi. If we had numerous calls that required whether it's ice rescue, water rescue, where an airboat, and I'm saying numerous calls, not two or three. Were, at least, an airboat improved beneficial, that'd be a different story. But I think about the, about the money, and I know the fire departments have talked, this is from Fire Advisory Board, Fire Advisory Board, when we last met, were not in favor of an airboat. They, they were in favor of additional radios. And, and I understand Mr. Lightfoot has made a point on the additional radios. But the formula that were, that the, is being looked at right now, I know Danner alluded to it, was, there is a formula to allocate radios to the departments of one, on the mobile for each apparatus and a number of portables as well. And then the departments would be, would be on, on them to purchase any additional ones. But if you look at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And earlier, Mr. Lightfoot had mentioned about the radio, and I think the baseline is somewhere around five grand for, for radio. That's thirty radios. And when we initially talked about the ARPA funds, you know, there were a number of people that had their hands out. And we, we decided as a board that we were going to spend the ARPA funds for the money would benefit the greatest number of St. Lawrence County residents. I submit to you that if we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, thirty is no radio. I submit to you that if we're going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, thirty eight is no radios. For emergency services, it's gonna, we're gonna get a lot more, uh, uh, benefit than we are from an airboat that maybe we'll use.
Thank you, Mr. Nisha. Uh, Mr. Lightfoot and Mr. Tiger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have several questions that are would require just a short answer. Uh, what year was this, uh, boat built?
Matt, do you know the answer to that question?
I'm looking it up right now as we speak. I believe it was last year's. Two thousand twenty-two.
Thank you. Was it owned the pre- the previous owner? Uh, was that a private individual or some entity that owned it?
It was a private individual.
Did anybody reach out to the owner and find out why after eleven hours they wanted to, uh, or they they either sold it or traded it in?
He reached out to Thousand Islands Airboat to to help him sell it because he it was fairly new. The reason he was selling it is because he moved. Um, and he no longer lives on a piece of property that had water.
All right. Uh, is there any grant funding other than ARP money associated with this? Cause I don't know how much ARP money has been or would be, uh, uh. Set for paying, uh, for this as any equipment that would need to be, uh, put on the boat. Uh, you know, lights, radios, radar, whatever else you put on it. Uh, i- is that going to be funded by ARP money or would it come from elsewhere?
I think that question would be for the county administrator.
Yeah, it would come from county funds.
County funds? Uh, can you tell me how much county funds?
Uh, the difference would be essentially a hundred thousand, probably just just like on that, not quite a thou- a hundred thousand, probably ninety-four, ninety-five. But that's what we got in front of you.
It's a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And getting back to the grant funding. Is there, is there any money that have been looked at rather than AARP money, uh, in the form of grants? That would be to you, Matt.
I do not believe so, no.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Matt, Mrs. Hager, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Unfortunately, it's very rare in state when it's reading out to me. An opinion on something and and it's sad really. And, um, that's not the case in this particular area. I did have people reach out. That alone is not enough to sway me to vote against this airboat. They were a vote. They have to take into consideration a bigger picture than lucky constituents, concerned constituents. But. The people that did reach out are people, I won't say have the qualifications to know what the meaning is. About Mr. Nisha's statement really hit the nail on the head. Do you have access to other boats? That was one of the points my my key constituent made. And, um, you know, we asked for money that, uh, was going to go to sustain the elderly. Tonight, we asked the government to increase that part of the office. Here's one really. Seem to seem. So why will Matt be seen? Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else hasn't spoke to this yet?
I'll be asked.
You'd be up. You're up, Mr. Current.
So the the resolution I feel sort of speaks to the need for this. We have seventy miles of shore along the Saint Lawrence River. We also have seven hundred and six lakes, seventy-four rivers. I think that we can't hang our head, our hats on having the three other agencies necessarily show up. Because there's been times that people have called for them that they have not. And that we have had to go to other methodology to get people out of the water. We've been lucky. I had a few constituents reach out to me too. They unfortunately belong to families who lost people. There was no vote. So. I don't say that we're going to use this boat every day. We had two opportunities in the last. Couple of weeks where we needed a boat like this, where people ended up in the ice cold water of the Saint Lawrence River. But. Would that boat have been right there? Maybe they got them out anyways. We were lucky. I just think that we have some responsibility, like as the county, we are the provider of emergency services when there is no other. We can't count on the state police showing up, what if they have the boat someplace else? We don't have a contract with them that says you will be here with your twenty-five years. Same happens with Aquasasne. They help out when they can, but we had a problem two years ago. Where they didn't show up because they didn't have a boat there. We listened to a long story about it. And tell you later about it again, I guess. So anyways. I just think that this is something that falls into what we should do and I understand that people would rather see, some people would rather see. This for radios. I realize we need radios too, but if we only have radios to talk about what we can't do in the water. I've got, I've got a bad space. So I hope people will. Support this resolution and think about the fact that we belong, like that's part of our. Responsibility is to make sure that we can get to people, to make sure that the people who keep this county state emergency services is at at our advisory board. They were in favor of having airboats, the emergency people who would have to go in the water. And. We should think about that. We should think about supporting something so that they have the tools to do their jobs. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Reagan hasn't spoke yet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The. As legislator current pointed out, you know, we have seventy-eight miles of shoreline on the Saint Lawrence. Um. You know, with two hundred lakes and rivers in Saint Lawrence County. Uh, you know, with Starway, with Cranberry Lake, with Black Lake. Um. An awful lot of it can be flowed from the mountains. There is an awful lot of Saint Lawrence County. That is, uh, on the water. And when when you look at where, uh, an awful lot of people are living, it's on the water, whether it's in the Adirondacks or. Um, you know, in the valley. People like living on the water and over the past twenty years, we've seen more and more. Our economy shifting to a tourism based economy, which means you have more people who have no idea. What to do and how to behave on the water, which is a recipe for the kinds of incidents that require the services. Of, uh, airboat. Um. There are always needs. There are always profits. There are always things that we could also spend the money on. Uh, my only point here is, uh, our emergency services director, uh, and others. Um, have pointed out that, uh. There are catastrophes that happen. There are, uh, times when, uh, these services are needed. And traditionally, uh, the county has served as that central services agency to step in. Because, uh, the state police vote's going to be in regular, the, uh, you know, the DEC. Uh, isn't always going to be able to run the Saint Lawrence County. Um. I believe that, uh, there will be times when we will need this tool in our toolbox and, uh, so I'm going to go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan. Second time around, Mr. Schmudd is the Mr. Chairman.
I guess I haven't made my mind up on this yet. I I'd like to know, um, if you could tell me, Matt, um. The amount of time, say somebody is on thin ice and they fall into icy water. What amount of time would be required for this boat to get there, be put into service compared to the amount of time? In the water that a feasible, feasible rescue is possible.
A very good question. So, um, yes, the state police do have an airboat in Saint Lawrence County. It's housed at one of our volunteer fire departments. Um, and same with the DEC has one locally. I don't think it's in the county. Uh, the issue we've run into with them is we have to call the sergeant that's on duty. The sergeant calls the captain. The captain has to vent through the major to get permission. Then those officers have to be called in. They have to go get the equipment and then respond to scene. Um, where this would be centrally located, have our first responders trained. Hopefully we'll set up a a system where we can tone them out right when the request is there and the boat will get out of service at a fairly decent time. Which which would be the difference between a rescue and a recovery.
So, uh, so I guess if you could give me from your knowledge, when a person goes into the water. How soon do they need to be arrested in order to make it feasible that they will survive?
They, it's it's minutes, um, with the water temperature being, you know, at thirty-two or thirty-two, three degrees. Uh, hyperthermia sets in depending on what they're wearing, like an ice fisherman will have a flotation suit on. Uh, we'll keep warmer for a little bit longer than a general person with general, like a Carhart BIBs or whatever. Um, so you're talking minutes before they start to, uh, get fatigued and go unconscious.
And also, um, it's been reported that there was a rescue attempt made on Hertz Lake. Uh, recently, maybe yesterday or a day or two ago, and an airboat was there but wasn't able to operate of. Are you familiar with that?
I'm not.
Well, sir. I just. It was on the news this morning. I saw it on the news this morning. It was on Hertz Lake. They used another boat, not the airboat, because it couldn't navigate on the swell. This layover was reported. I didn't hear that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Can I speak? I just wanted to let you know, uh. It's a hard decision when you're talking about spending this kind of money, but I'm pleased to know that the ARPA funding is going to be there. I also find it troubling that, uh, one of the nearest boats, the only one from the DEC is way up in Raybrook, New York. And, uh, and then the hierarchy that goes on with this, with the call to the state police, what that, uh, Mr. Danner just described. I think I've made up my mind to think that, uh. This is, uh, the very first life that this airboat saves. And that in its crew, it'll be well worth the purchase. As Mr. Reagan points out, we've got miles and miles and miles of lakes, shores, river shores. Uh, in this county and, uh, I I think it's the matter of time before, uh, we're going to look at this and say we're glad we made this purchase. So I'll be voting yes.
Okay, I got Mr. Hall again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first question to Mr. Daniel. What is our our plan to operationalize a training? Protocol for, uh, those who will be operating the the craft and, uh, and also is there? Need for like a specific deployment plan that we don't have in place?
We do not have a a deployment plan in place yet. Um, as for training, everybody will have to be trained. Uh, they'll have to do yearly skills on it and demonstrate these skills yearly. Cause we want to make sure that if, uh, and any of the operators that are operating it, um, are well trained and well perverse with how it runs.
Yeah, I know you mentioned before, uh, part of the delivery will include some training, just thinking about ongoing. And I spoke, I spoke with a friend of mine who's a rescue diver in the county and, uh, she mentioned. An instance where they were using an airboat, I don't know which agents, probably one of them. The the reason there was a holdup, um, with getting to the person who was needed to rescue me was an operational. And the 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 operator wasn't knowledgeable enough to get the craft working. So I wanted to read, if we have it, we know how to use it, you know, to its greatest effectiveness. Thank you.
And we'll, we'll kind of do it the same way we do with the the command vehicle. Um, we have through the system alerting systems that we use, um, whenever it's called out, we can make that alert, we'll go down. And we'll have it preset up with the departments for a vehicle to have it towed.
Thank you.
You'll send Mr. Hall. And one. Mr. Light. One more shot.
Just a couple of comments. Well, uh, certainly I think the argument can be made, and I guess probably has been made. That somewhere down the line in days, months, years, whatever, we will have the opportunity. To hopefully save somebody's life if that is out there. But to depend on that with what? There's no plan to do with it right now. Uh, I think, uh, uh. It it's not voting well for, uh, in my mind, trying to sell me on this. And my concern is this is you've got an airboat. This is, uh, uh. Not the airboat that I was, uh, certainly thinking about. Uh, and, uh, we we discussed this a little bit earlier. Uh, at our caucus and, uh, what what my my question is, is that. Here, this is a pleasure craft, uh, albeit, uh, shooked up. Uh, it's a four seater. Uh, I can't imagine that there is sufficient room. With four seats in that boat, looking at the photograph that I saw. If this was a, a, uh, a rescue type of operation with more than one or two people, that it would be adequate, number one. Uh, I think it's more of a pleasure craft than a workboat. Uh, I think that, uh, you know, obviously, uh, you know, the the motor is a dependable motor. Uh, Mr. Jeanette said it has a cast iron block. I used to work on them, uh, in my, uh. Post real job, uh, and, uh, they are, they are very dependable motors. Uh. That being said. Where is this thing going to be kept? Well, Canton is probably the most logical place as being the center of the county and then it's. Uh, it's a shorter trip. If it were stationed over on the Saint Lawrence. So my question is, is that how do you get that from Canton to Christina? Starlight. Paper light. How do you get it there when the call comes in? We've got to call somebody in, probably a deputy, because it's going to be in Canton. And I hope it's a deputy and I hope it's a deputy that's trained in the operation of this boat. And that we are not relying on members of the fire service to do it. You're looking at an outfit that costs, it's going to cost about a quarter of a million dollars. Uh, it needs to be maintained and I don't think, uh, and I've had experience with the emergency equipment being stored elsewhere. Than in Canton that was supposed to be maintained, that never was maintained. So I'm thinking that what we need is a trained operator. Preferably a sheriff. That is able to respond, hopefully working if a call comes in. But if not, you're going to have the same procedure as the state police have. And I can find that a little bit hard to believe going with my past experience in the state police. That you had to go through all those layers of supervision in order to get an okay to do that. That's what the hell these sergeants are there for, is to make decisions then and there in emergency situations. That should have never gone to Raybrook to get the blessing of the troop commander. That's crazy. If you're doing it within the county and you have a deputy doing it, that deputy can be called, he gets in the car, he hooks the thing up. Drives it to the scene. Look at the time now that's wasted, okay? And we're talking about a a lifesaving thing, sort of hard, uh, to think that somebody's life is going to be saved. When a police car towing a boat. when a police car towing a boat, uh, is driving to Augsburg to launch it. He's got to go up to Morristown, uh, or, you know, even vice versa, going to Morristown or Lucina. Uh, maybe bad weather. You're not going to get there in time, in, in, in my estimation, to do any lifesaving. The second thing that was brought up is that this could be used as a recovery boat. That boat is useless as a recovery boat. Take my word for it, I've been on many recoveries. And that would be unusable. A recovery boat has two guys in the back with grappling, well, not grappling hooks, but big hooks on wires, dragging the bottom of the waterbed, whatever it is that you're in there, and you're hoping to hook on some piece of clothing or something else and, uh, funding these people. So I just don't think it fits the bill. I don't think we need a muster like that to do what we're doing. The state police of Augsburg have a boat over there. I don't know about any other state police station. Uh, I don't know where the D E C is, but I know they have access to boats. Uh, and, uh, the D E C is very active along St. Lawrence. So I, I'm, I'm just having a lot of, of trouble. And the last thing I would say is this, as I attended a Ton of Ashwagati board meeting last Monday night, uh, I hadn't been there in a while, so it's quite a lengthy, uh, presentation that I had. But one of them was about an airboat. One of the people there, not a, a, uh, spectator, uh, said, "I hope you won't buy a used airboat." That person didn't have time to, or there wasn't time allotted to him to give me the reasons why, but it's probably like buying a used tire. You usually end up with somebody else's headaches, okay? And eleven hours on this, it just strikes me funny that after eleven hours, somebody got rid of this. Uh, and it's, it's a twenty-two model. Obviously, uh, I'd say obviously. Perhaps it sat on the floor for a year, but I don't know that. So, uh, at least at this stage of the game, I'm going to vote no for those reasons. Uh, I, I certainly, uh, you know, appreciate the, uh, support that my fellow legislators are giving to this, but I just don't see it being all that it's supposed to be, to be honest with you. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is here, you've got a great big boat with a great big engine that is just too tempting not to put the pedal in the metal, okay? And that concerns me because if that, uh, uh, seven-liter engine or six-liter engine, whatever it is, blows up, uh, you might as well go buy a new boat, because, uh, that is going to be one expensive project to replace that. So everybody isn't going to treat it the same, and that's why you can't have, uh, everybody in the fire service getting trained on this. Need one guy that knows the boat, that can handle the boat, and is responsible for the boat. And if it gets screwed up, we know exactly who, uh, who to go to. So, thank you.
Okay, I've got, um, who's talked, who's spoke, what we get to, like, reset. Your ones, your ones, and then first hand up was Ben, second was Nicole, third was Larry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just think that we should devote this much discussion to every hundred thousand dollars that we kind of spend. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I'm going to ask these young gentlemen a little bit, okay? Um, let's turn it down.
Thank you. And I just want to ask before we vote, because I definitely knew how I was voting prior to this discussion, that there were some comments made, um, about the radio. And so I just want to make sure sometimes I'm not reading between the lines, but I need to just to to put things right black and white for me. Uh, in voting to support this resolution, I understand that the purchase of the airboat, but does it also, uh, in the unwritten part, mean that we wouldn't have funding available um, to consider radios in either or that I'm actually voting for without seeing it in the resolution? I just kind of need that information before we vote in short.
Certainly, maybe so.
It is not a war once those discussions are completed. I think there's one more. I think I was able to have one last week. Um, once those are complete, uh, you will see information coming to the board regardless of this vote. Thank you.
Mr. Denation?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, this is certainly, uh, a lot of discussion, which is good.
Go ahead.
Uh, but the airboat, uh, you know, as Mr. Light was saying, yeah, this is a recreational vehicle. It's just not even total. It's, uh, that's this is not, uh, it's not, it's not what if we wanted one, that, that's not what we want. It's not even really a vehicle. The other thing is, uh, question, where, where is it going to be stored? We don't, unless, unless we have a building up here in Canton that I don't know about, that could very well be, uh, where we're going to store it. First, man, be, when are we going to place this store in? Where we're going to store it. And it's going to cost another, what, another hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars to build a, uh, uh, to build a little barn or some sort of a structure, house? I think it would be two hundred thousand dollar airboat and mobile command. If, if it was.
Good question. No, I, I'd ask the sheriff real quick. Is there room in that adjacent to the jail? Building a store, building a shelter, you had to. Would there be room in that? Yeah, it was in the jail. Uh, you had someone put the store in it, the store.
Oh, no, it's not. No, no, not in the shelter. Okay. We have, you have, we have.
Okay. That was a good question. Um, and well, I've got two things I've got to mention. When I started this, I said I wasn't, oh, did that move on? Right ahead.
Against this would be getting a lot of money for something that may not ever be used. But I can't help but think that at this stage of life, that's sad and just, yeah, I'm asking. Manage this way, it needs to be managed. This isn't a boat just to take out and show off. This would be a boat should use for certain persons. And people that are involved that would take care of it. Um, I just can't help but think if this is one of my family members, the money wouldn't mean anything. And I'm pretty sure if it's somebody else's family member, it wouldn't mean anything to them, too. And I'm pretty close, so I'm tight with the buck. You know, you can spend where you have to spend, but this is one of those rare areas. I, I would be willing for this, I think.
Okay. Now I'm going to give my thoughts. Few years ago, we had an opportunity to replace the, the sheriff's department, and they wanted by a used motor. Uh, Tony Arquette, sitting back there, and I, we agreed by him, everybody agreed by some. That's just a river thing that's been going on since, correct. When I started here, I said, "I'm not going to undermine any of the ARPA committee's decisions." The ARPA committee was designed to do the highest, most money revenue. And I think they did a great job of that. I got that one in the back. We had a drone. We bought a drone a few years back. Bought us a little bit off-guard, spent thousands of dollars on our drone. Would we ever use it? Shortly after, the little kid got lost, getting off the bus, chasing the dog in the woods. Deployed the drone, found the drone child. One time. I don't know if we've used it since, but I remember that one time. And I bet those parents were glad they had a drone that day, okay? The time, response time, I think, and response time. Wherever we're going to keep this, someone's got to drive to it. There's a trail again, up to that boat. Scoot it over to where, or they're going to be scooting to, Star Lake, Cranberry Lake, Lucina, Chippewa Bay, who knows? I got to get there quick as I can. I don't know logistics of that, and how that's going to work. All right. Why are you pushing up to what you like? And I'm not pushing up to what you like. Deadline for reappropriation part. We're coming on that fairly quickly. Hopefully, we vote this down. We'd have to dedicate that money for the end of April.
We're looking to confirm the timeline on that, but you do have concerns.
So there is a deadline with the reappropriation. So I don't want to, the last thing I want to do is lose the hundred thousand. There you go. So, uh, I think I'm going to vote for it. I think I'm going to vote for this vote. I think I'm going to stick with the way I planned it. I do have a lot of concerns, okay? For it, go vote.
Okay.
Jesse, yes, no, Mr. Chair. You're certain?
I, I suppose, yes, yes. I'm a monkey, it's a big, a big part of my life already. Uh, but I do think what you're saying about the response time does make me a little bit nervous, especially you have a big county, a lot of lakes. So being there fast, like hypothermia, because it does happen very fast. Being there and being able to, like, save someone very fast is definitely something I've been thinking about here in college. So making sure that we can get there fast. And also the training, I don't think we should train multiple people. I think you're going to have one person, especially if something goes wrong, you know what? And then also mature, you know, I think, sorry, sorry. Um, the LS engine, if it is a big ass, big lockout engine, like that, that's way overkill for a rescue. Like, I don't think some people can train multiple people on it. Some people wouldn't.
Yes or no?
Yeah. I would definitely go. I, I just don't think that at that point, I think I did it.
What do you think, I? You'd be a yes?
Yeah.
Yes or no?
I don't know.
You're a no. All right. Do this, the roll call. Please.
Dave, you do the first part.
Okay, later, Dave.
No. No.
Terminally, yes. Karen?
Aye.
Reagan?
Aye.
Horace, aye?
I'll be later, Dave.
I'm here. No.
Chairman?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Nation?
No.
Perkins?
No.
Paul?
Aye.
Bae? Hager? Buster? I guess.
Did anyone say anything before?
Yeah, I am. I'll take you on. That is, yesterday was the two hundred second anniversary, first day of St. Lawrence County. So I wanted to remind you all of that. Um, we are certainly looking forward, along with the two hundred fiftieth, uh, commemoration, we're looking at the twenty-fifth anniversary of St. Lawrence County. But also, of course, to our standing tenarian, Ella Randall Cunningham. I think her happy birthday as well. Wanted to wish, uh, or to, uh, share with you a transaction of one thousand three hundred dollars associated with social services with higher than expenses and their payments due to the state. Um, also wanted to report out on the NICE conference last week, three legislators and four staff in attendance. I will have the total cost for you next week. Uh, but also, uh, Chairman Horace suggested a brief summary associated with the takeaways from this year's. Um, there were two standing committees. Um, they actually have behind, um, the public employees and the intergovernmental relations, uh, committees. Those now are together. Uh, never short on sharing those family complaints they receive. Um, I chair the standing committee on tax and finance, and the three resolutions we took up in summary uh, were start of collection along with the short-term rentals. Uh, essentially, the state is, or NICE Act is looking at this and asking the state to consider this short-term rental room as another optic of sales tax, not unlike the internet sales tax collection. And so, uh, occupancy to be considered after they're successful, or they, they look to get success out of these sales tax collections. Uh, so that was supported by the sale of the taxation finance committee. Also, two of the resolutions that our attorney insisted with, associated, um, with the Hennepin decision, and, uh, trying to find a way to work along with the governor's recommendation from the executive budget along, uh, some, some guidelines associated with how this is to be interpreted and how this is to be carried out. Uh, also, looking at, um, a different approach this year. Every year, we go to NICE Act, and many times, this board takes up the issue on mandates. And the way that NICE Act looked at it this year was around the housing affordability. And, and it was an interesting angle, because how much we're hearing these days about housing and affordability and the, the need for housing. NICE Act took a little bit of a different spin on that, and the affordability associated with being able to pay your taxes. So I thought that was a little bit unusual, but also certainly will get more attention, I think, in us begging our friends and talking about mandates. Just asking for, um, fourteen, estimated fourteen billion dollars that are collected and they are expended in mandates around the state to be dealt with by the states. They continue to, um, either emphasize what creates affordability for. Uh, but it was an interesting, different approach than we've seen before, and that all three resolutions, two were amended, uh, were adopted by the resolutions committee and ultimately by the board. Also, I attended the session on artificial intelligence, and the, the first frustration or hesitation I had was around it, uh, taking jobs, right? I think there's a hesitation generally speaking about that happening. And the way that NICE Act looked at this or presented that this, uh, session was around data collection and, uh, the ability to take a lot of data and compile that into useful information for decision-making for boards, legislators, or staff, or leaders in departments, to be able to assess things as artificial intelligence. So more on that to come. Certainly interesting. Um, and then finally, attended the tier-one training for emergency management that, uh, is required in order to stay eligible for grant funding. So legislator Hall also attended that session as well. Uh, wanted to mention, though, that I am going to work with the cloud director, Denner. There's been a shortage in our ability to bring training to the county, um, at the OEM level. I think they've had a shortage of staff as well, of being able to bring some of the, uh, national incident management system training, or NIMs, as it's commonly known, back so that senior staff at the county can be trained in the event of another incident that were more prepared. We've had a tremendous turnover, um, in the last twenty years, and that's the last time that I believe competent training occurred associated with NIMs. So pleased to see that, uh, opportunity for us as well. Uh, wanted to mention briefly that the multi-use trail is not open. Uh, with the nice weather that we've had, we've seen some, um, use of it, uh, asking the public to be aware and reminded that it doesn't open until night fifteenth. Uh, but we are working now, and the trail permits. Uh, and shortly, we will be working with the vendors to get them ready, to be able to sell those permits long before the opening day. Uh, but there has been some traffic, and it is causing damage. Um, also, the concern that Chairman Horace raised around the ARPA funds usage, two different instances appear that, uh, new plan has to be submitted by the end of April, as well as no changes to ARPA fund usage after April. That was not something that the treasurer's been made aware of, I've been made aware of, or any of my colleagues. So looking to get some fact-checking done on that, or maybe the interpretation of that, and be able to bring that back to the board, and certainly convene the ARPA committee to take that issue up. As you know, uh, we are moving through the spending. Uh, first, we are six point three million dollars into our spend. Uh, and so we want to make sure, if that's true, that there's a very good concrete plan for all those funds moving through and getting spent. We were working under the assumption that twenty-four, all of the funds had to be committed, and that's the interim final rule that was guiding our decision and our recommendations to this board. So more to come on that as soon as we have that information. Um, tomorrow, we're going to host the vacancy review committee at noon. There are seven um, there are seven of those, though, sorry, five of those that are abolish and create requests. There are ten that are budgeted positions that are being requested to fill, and there's one, um, that is a create these questions. So that's basically your breakdown. Um, quick update on the Capitol. Uh, Pearl Street, as you all have noticed, is now closed. Uh, Pearl Street, as you all have noticed, is now closed. Street end. Uh, we are grateful to the village officials for working with us on making sure that. And it's tremendously helpful. Or of the demolition, which is now underway. The second floor is almost completely demolished, except for the location and areas we're keeping, and we're going to build out from. Uh, the site is being kept tidy, both internally and externally. Uh, wanted to let you know the low voltage bids are in and being evaluated for award. Um, next up for our P will be the furniture, and that we'll, we'll also hear more about very shortly. Uh, we are currently transitioning our parking. Uh, we are moving our county fleet out to the human services center, and we'll be sharing new maps associated with that. And we certainly appreciate the patience. Uh, we know that we're basically one grand jury call away from that. Spot, so, uh, but certainly if you're hearing complaints about that, please make sure you let my office know. Uh, we're trying to communicate that as well as alternative options for parking. I've reached out to the mayor, uh, requesting, um, at least some clarification if they, if they care to offer any about which streets. So that we, you know, feather that traffic out and not all the streets are congested. Um, the, this will be a big year, I think, as legislature like foot emphasized a couple of weeks back. Uh, our capital projects underway, we'll be starting the roof on the jail, um, next month. Um, and then the furniture carpet paint upgrades associated with the HP Smith building are continuing for the duration of the year. And you all may also see us come back. There are incentives such that the board should take a look at it, um, with some potential window replacement. Uh, there are some energy, uh, things to be considered as well. Um, and the bids are in, uh, they're almost complete for highway, and our superintendent tells me that we will, with the funds that the board has additionally appropriated, be able to complete our ADA models. So that is tremendous considering you don't know once you put the bids out until they come back in, uh, what you're going to be able to accomplish. Um, I do want to emphasize to you each hour as we go, I'm going to bring you updates as frequently as possible, so that you stay on top of this and can anticipate any concerns and answer questions as are raised by your. Um, the next meeting for that group, uh, organizing to manage the solar eclipse is next Monday, the eighteenth at nine AM by Zoom. If you're interested, please make sure you let us know. We'll make sure to get you that invitation. Uh, we are working through the rate implementation, and that's the notification system. Uh, we're working through what that's going to look like for the county, uh, having that prepared and operational before April first. Uh, but please join us if you can or if you have questions, make sure you let us know and we'll get those answered. Uh, briefly, our public health director research that is closed. Uh, this week I will meet with the chair of both Board of Health, as well as Chair of Research Committee, legislator Hall, to review seventeen applications that are qualified for the position. Uh, so I'll be talking both with our search committee members, legislator Burke and Karen, to go over those. Uh, our hope is to organize, have our interview process expedited, so that with, uh, with best outcomes and staff inclusion, we can have a recommendation with you next month. Finally, uh, we are acquiring nine twenty one Shore Line Street. Uh, working with county attorney's offices, working with county realty, as you may bear, uh, to review the property this week and to get it listed for sale. Uh, and then lastly, uh, one other funding piece, uh, all eligible expenses for our Christmas. Storm have been submitted to FEMA for consideration, which will be no less than probably ten back and forth about what they don't want to pay for. So we'll continue fighting a good fight, trying to bring back every dollar that we spent. Questions?
I do want to have any question? Mr. Hall?
Those, uh. Two covers in the top seventy-five percent?
Okay. No, this under new business, what I started last year and I had like. You know, is the people that attended NICE Act in this soil in order. Please give a brief presentation with what they attended and what they gave on it. Mr. Hall, you want to start?
Mr. Chair, yeah, so I, I attended a few sessions, found them to be very helpful. Uh, the first one was a presentation on Medicaid. Uh, it was, it was presented by a third party, so not, not a representative of the state. But it was really an overview of, uh, an, an argument of reality that Medicaid has. Expanded greatly beyond its initial scope, its original design to provide state connect, uh, health insurance for. For people and people who are disabled. Uh, and one of, one of my main takeaways was the, the, the fact that, uh, today, there are more people, uh, who are covered under Medicaid. Who are above the poverty line than those who are below the poverty line. And forty-nine percent of, uh, people who are covered by Medicaid are, uh, non-disabled adults. Obviously, that doesn't cover other, other intricacies, but just sort of broad, broad brush stroke. That in a lot of ways, it's kind of thrown into a kind of a Frankenstein version of government, uh, health insurance for a general population, uh, more or less. And that would be, that'd be great if it were providing quality at a, at a, uh, acceptable cost, but. Uh, this, our New York State's spending per resident, so large population, but adjusted for the population, so per resident spending on Medicaid is, we, we come in, uh, first in the nation. One out of fifty, uh, and not only are we above average, we're seventy percent above the average of spending on Medicaid, on, on Medicaid per resident in the nation. Uh, and if you look at the cumulative growth of our Medicaid spend of the last four years, if it were, uh, if it were a hill, you couldn't climb it this fast. It's, it's above forty-five degrees. Now, there's an effort to try to slow the increase, uh, but it's difficult. Uh, a lot of the drivers are increase in minimum wage, four billion dollars, each or this threat providers, a couple billion dollars there. Uh, bonuses for physicians and providers, and a couple billion dollars there. Uh, and so. The presenter shared, uh, a, a bit of an anecdote around a situation where. There was a lobbying group that was lobbying for funding, uh, to be included in Medicaid, uh, basically a state, uh, re-agree, redistribution of funds. So Medicaid in New York, um, and the redistribution to move, uh, over a hundred million dollars to training for, uh, for, I think it was nursing home, uh, staff. To, to see sort of signs for, um, residents who might be declining, right, to prevent hospital admissions. Uh, so hundred million dollars plus, um, allocated to that purpose. And the presenter walked us through sort of the timeline following those funds. Uh, they got to the nursing homes, but there were agreements that were pre-built into the, into the union contracts that allocated a lot of that money to pay for the insurance benefits for, for represented employees. And so, uh, then there actually was a surplus from that, from that, those funds. And so the remaining surplus was lobbying to actually go to an education fund, uh, to help increase education around state, uh, around healthcare needs. Turns out the education fund was the same lobbying group that asked for the funds in the first place, kind of drew this loop. Um, and he said, this is just a one-off scenario, so, uh. That was enlightening. Uh, and that, that was basically the presentation, there really were the names, it's still burning, but it was enlightening to see how much money you spend, uh, every year on Medicaid. That was the first one. The second one was by NICE sort of clean energy, uh, just outlining the, you know, funds that are available in counties. And I know our, the people who need to know about those that are, at our, in our, are already well into working on those projects. Uh, that was useful. And then the last thing I'll mention is, I went to a, a seminar entitled empowering women in local government. And to my surprise, I was the only man in the room, uh, of sixty people. And we actually, it was actually a wonderful seminar. Um, it was, it was more of a work group, so you'd sit at your table of seven hundred people and work through zero questions. Uh, and it was, it was actually loved. Um, it was, it was eye-opening, we had a really great discussion, talking about, okay, how do we get more, more done to come to the seminar next year? But really, uh, a couple of the takeaways there was how far, uh, how far we, I say we, I, I was a lot, but how far we've come in the last half century. As, as far as, you know, women in representation and how in local government and across, or, uh, not there yet, but very proud of us. And so we had, you know, ladies and different generations at the table to share their experiences. And also the reality of that, uh, you know, broad broad strokes, uh. In, 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 in generalizing, men and women, we, different things to the table, often. And we want to have an environment that, that values that, emphasizes that, and also are, we are all self. Reflexive enough to grow where we can grow and to learn from each other, uh, in a way. So I found that very useful. And then, uh, concluding, it took the tier one emergency management course with Mrs. Doyle, and I found that also quite, quite enlightening too. So next snowstorm, we're, we're prepared.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Mr. Jamar, you got a little bit?
Um, yeah, I was basically talking to the engineers and the engineering firms, uh, mainly the biggest three, right, last year, so we've got to spend that money, get some building stuff out there. Um, permitting for nine years, so a lot of the stuff they were talking about. Just general noise complaints, right? Like, some of those permits can take up like two years now, so I don't know how that goes for spending of that kind of money. Um, other than that, I mean, there's a lot of AI stuff, same. It was all data driven, but the thing I, I noticed most from the big change from last year is, um, I don't know the timing, because we have all these illegals coming over and all that, I'm not saying it's a negative way of that. But what I noticed is everything shifted now from last year of mental health and veterans. And all my cards, the people I thought I was going to see, I didn't see any. So it's, it's, it's quite the machine, uh, right? So, uh, I give it a five on that.
All right.
Definitely.
Thank you. Mr. Seaver?
Well, first, I would like to thank Mr. Volper, going to be nine percent of my presentation. On the Medicaid Human Services Committee for NICE Act. So, uh, the first meeting that I attended was that we had a few resolutions that we, uh, had drafted this group, push forward. The first one was a resolution. Opposing the governor's pledge proposal to shift more costs to the counties by mandating higher spending on welfare services, the flexible funding for family services, law grant. Basically, over the years, they keep making the county share higher and higher and the state share lower and lower. So we're asking for a return to previous levels. The second resolution, uh, committee drafted was an urgent of governor and legislature to become true partners in addressing homelessness by focusing on rent allowance and standard of need, which must include the restoration. For the fifty-fifty cost sharing for safety net programs, provide actual brick and mortar solutions by making permanent housing central focus here. We, we. Throw all the money we want at, if we don't have a brick and mortar places to put people, um, we're going to be spinning our wheels. Um, the third resolution that was drafted was a resolution to urge the governor and legislature, excuse me, the legislature to ensure that local social services commissioners are directly involved in discussions to reduce costs in Medicaid program. They're having all kinds of meetings and discussing how they're going to save money by putting this, putting that. And they're not allowing the local level people who are actually dealing with it to have any input in the processes. So that was the, uh, the third resolution that we sent to the NICE Act Resolution Committee to have a push for. Then I did go to the same session that Mr. Hall was in, um, so I'm not going to say a whole lot about that. We just a couple of other things I'd like to just, just to, to show. The, uh, the level of how many people the last few years have been included in Medicaid. Um, statewide enrollment, seven point six million, as November twenty-third, that's thirty-nine percent. Of the state, the population of state of New York is enrolled Medicaid, I'm not sure if I'm, appreciate for another. And in New York City, at fifty-three million, or four point three million, fifty-one percent of population of New York City is enrolled Medicaid. That is way more than it was ever intended to. So, um, and the last one I went to was, um, a little more in depth. It was the budget analysis of the, uh, governor's proposed, uh, twenty twenty budget. Most of it was more of the same, but there's one thing that I did want to bring back to this topic, because I know that there has been emphasis lately on. Making sure that our elderly are being taken care of and that they're able to, to. Grow old in place. The, the thing that stuck out to me most from that, uh, session was that tucked in there, um, and into the portion of cost savings was a reduction of a hundred million dollars from the fund towards nursing homes that are in financial distress. There's no financial distress, and we're going to save money by, uh, taking more money. So, uh, that one kind of stuck with me as I, as I left. Those are my sections.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Thank you.
Well, I, uh. Open the morning, I went to Indian Man Plan again. The main discussion was, you know, compact revenue. I involved receiving funds and go back to, to, I guess. Resolutions that they brought forward, both on basically the same ones we voted on last year. Uh, the chair's breakfast, I attended the chair's breakfast. Employees from vacant positions, that's one of the big issues, EMS. How they're going to handle EMS, who's going to pay for it? When counties have started a hybrid system. If we venture down that road, they strongly suggest we reach up people that started this before us and find out where they made the mistakes, because it's all over the place for who's going to handle and how they're going to handle the end. There's a drastic shortage of the state, of every county throughout this country. And it has to be addressed, so. Uh, I also attended the state budget meeting. I was fairly dismal, you would walk, um. It didn't sound, from all I heard, it didn't sound like there's going to be a lot of modifications to this budget, like in prior years. It sounded like there, there's like nothing that's going to roll in my eyes. So it's funding and all those other things. I don't know, I hope, I hope common head, the common sense comes to the head, but, um, even. Even at the chair's meeting, it didn't sound like there's going to be much change in the budget that's presented. I did attend the cannabis legalization, they asked me to go to that, he went last year. Um, that doesn't sound like that's too productive to me. Um, it sounds like we kind of something that. And now we're going to start forming the lease section of the canvas to do the enforcement, go find the stores. And if you see a store, it's going to have this barcode with cannabis whatever on it, and if it doesn't, it's not a legal shop. And if you can look in and see any, any of the cannabis or whatever, that's not a legal shop, because you can't see it from the. Couple of restrictions that go along with that. Uh, we'll see where that ends up. We did have an opportunity with Miss Doyle, Mr. Hall, Mr. Jamar, Ms. Cole, to go to the governor's mansion. She holds the house, does, with quite a few, it's actually all over the, all over the state. First, I was a little remiss, I think, and maybe not go, but I went, and I enjoyed it, very nice. You know, it's just an opportunity I didn't want to miss, and I don't think anyone. Came out with the same, same impressions, very impressive place. Um, and then that night, we had the opportunity, a summer in the gray, put this up in dinner, uh, with our common parts from Jefferson County, that's years ago. Uh, we've got a great relationship with Jefferson County, actually, the chair tasked me a little while ago while we were in caucus. About an issue coming up with the solar eclipse, wondered where we stood. Well, it's nice to be able to bounce off each other's head and learn from each other, and I think we've got a great relationship. I really enjoy that, very, very good one, so. Um, I enjoyed it, it was a big conference, uh, it's definitely shorter to come to the conference home than it is to eighty-one and over. I mean, we proved that Mr. Jamar did. So. Oh. Okay, and Mr. Johnson's out. Rick, are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
You can.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I, I really enjoyed the conference as well. Um, I currently sit on the newly appointed IT task force. So this is the second NICE Act conference that I have attended, and, uh. In addition to, so the, the work of the task force, you know, we're, we're still very much figuring out, you know, what we want to do, why are we here? What are we in fact going to focus on making better? Uh, and we had a very good discussion to that end. In terms of, um, discovering ways to align ourselves with the activities, projects, and priorities of, of the NICE Act member constituents and offer, uh, insights and help where possible. What we didn't want to do as an IT task force is just have another, I, I'm part of another group of, of, uh, county, local government IT directors. Just have another one of those meetings where we talk about concerns, uh, that we have in, in technology. Because we do that there, but, uh, here, just to, to take and to focus on, on what NICE Act's priorities. Because we do that there, but here, just to, to take and to focus on, on what NISAC's priorities are to that end and how we can help them, which I thought was, was really good and I'm looking forward to exploring that further. I attended the, a number of the plenary sessions, which, all of which I thought were really great. I very much enjoyed the talk from James Olson, who was a former chief of counterintelligence for the CIA, which may have been one of the best presentations I've ever heard. I could go on and on about that, but, but I won't. It was, it was really good from a security perspective, but he was just very engaging and that was all really good. It's always, it's good for me to, you know, I rub shoulders with some vendors and of course, some of my buddies are there on the IT task force. But it's, it provides me with a perspective of, you know, the upper echelons of county government, like all you. And, and that's, it's always a good reminder to, you know, help us, you know, shape our focus as technology leaders to see what your priorities are, what is on your minds, so we can adjust accordingly. But always, always a good time and then appreciate very much being part of it.
Thank you very much, Rick. Yeah, I was probably one of the biggest disbelievers in NISAC for quite a while. And last year was my first time to go and I got it back. I was a fool to think if you cannot come away with learning something new. It's just, it's incredible the amount of information that you learn from those things. I heard anyone, haven't been tried it all. Or whatever. Yeah, I was definitely an anti and now. Moving on. The other.
What? Last Friday, I've got an email from the lady Allison Rebunero, who's the governor's regional representative for the North Country. And she is informing myself and I assume the other legislators. So I may be repeating something that you already know, but I, just to put a finer point on it, I think it would be good if everybody could be at where I am going to suggest that you might be on Thursday morning at nine thirty at the Augsburg Airport to hear from the Transportation Commissioner Dominguez, Marie Dominguez. This was supposed to be a budget event, but it's turning into a major announcement regarding transportation. In looking up a little bit of information about this lady, her background is in aviation. So I assume that it has to do with the airport. So I think it would be good if we had a nice showing out there to show our interest in one of the little gems in St. Lawrence County and that airport. See you there.
And now this life. Well, I was there. We had a pot balance over her side and mentioned some of our, she's our rep for this area and very nice girl. And we express our concern for our two jails and I would like to keep them. And she's very well aware of our two jails and the letters and all that. All support we received. So the governor knows that we want. So I think if we can go Thursday, you know, the airport and also listen.
It will force.
So thank you. One more new business. Moving to committee reports. Any committee reports? You know, committee reports is actually a session.
Do for regulation, negotiation personnel, which is the medical and annual pressure on the district. I know. Well, sorry.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we amend our medical malpractice insurance. Not online yet. Okay. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we amend our, our medical malpractice insurance, changing the deductibles as recommended by the county attorney and approve.
Also, sound waste insurance.
As discussed and recommended.
Second, if I missed a chat, Ms. Kern, discussion. All in favor? Playman.
Our final resolution that also includes the authority for the chairman to decide any agreements associated with.
Sir, yes. Operation to make Ms. Kern appointments.
Agriculture and Farmland Protection Board term to expire three, four, twenty twenty-eight. Megan Bodich from Lisbon. For the St. Lawrence County Planning Board term to expire three, four, twenty twenty-seven. Margaret Finan of Norwood, Margaret Mock of Canton. Reappointments to the Fire Advisory Board term to expire three, four, twenty twenty-seven. Eric Johnson, Canton, Richard Rusaw from Star Lake. Larry Whitten from Halesboro, New York, and Steve Milton from Braeger Falls.
And do I have, I'm doing. So we'll do a second. Okay, do I have a second for those? Mr. Schmuller, second. Any concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those who carry now Services Committee, Mr. Hall.
And Mr. Chair, appointments for the Youth Advisor Board. Appointments. Anya Banzal, Rissa Burn, Norwood, Dominic Diaco of Norwood. Theodore Hughes, Austin. Angelina Kupovik of Augsburg, Yelena Bella of Augsburg. Ha Ha Ait Matala from Patton, Madison McNamara of Colton. Kaden Sharp of South Colton, Zoe Whalen of Augsburg, and Macy White of Russell. Reappointments to the Youth Advisory Board term to expire twelve, forty-one, twenty-six. Elaine, Elena Goodrich of Winthrop, Adam Simmons, Canton, back with Zupor. Zupor of Canton, Casey Jones of Patton.
Do I have a second? Second by the Janak, Mr. Terminality, Mr. Kern. Any concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
My folks, carry. Mr. Janak. I did not have my, what, sorry. Sorry. Ms. Kern.
For the County Assembly, we have Mr. Janak. We have St. Lawrence County Workforce Development Board term to expire three, four, twenty twenty-seven. Lauren P. Malone. Reappointments to the St. Lawrence County Trail Advisory Board term to expire one, thirty-one, twenty twenty-eight. Tanya Tanbridge from Canton, Debbie Christie from Canton, and Charles Scholler from South Colton.
Do I have a second? Let's invite Mr. Janak. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Here, chairs of one. The HR Search Committee, it's going to be led by Glenn Webster, joined by Mr. Lightfoot and Mr. Beck. All the business, we're adjourned.
Move to adjourn.